Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the 30th meeting of the 142nd Council of the Corporation of the City of St. Thomas. We would like to start tonight's meeting with a two minutes of silence on the day of the funeral for the longest-serving sovereign in Royal. And let's go ahead and do that. Thank you, Your Majesty, and God save the King.
Madam Clerk?
Your worship, at this time, I will read the Indigenous Land Acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the land on which we meet is the traditional territory of the Hodno-Shoni, Anishna Beck, Adewandirank, Nutro, and Mississauga peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also recognize that this land is now home to the Manci Delaware Nation, Chipewas of the Thames First Nation, and Oneida Nation of the Thames. This land was settled through Treaty Number Two, the McKee Purchase Treaty of 1790, and we, as beneficiaries of the treaty, recognize our collective responsibilities to the land and water.
Thank you. To council, any disclosures of interest on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, minutes.
Your worship, I have a motion that the minutes of the meeting held on September the 12th, 2022 be confirmed. Moved by Counsel Peters, seconded by Counsel Rymel.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie.
Council will now resolve itself into Committee of the Whole to deal with the following business. First committee this evening is Strategic Direction and Development. First item relates to an amendment to the Community Improvement Plan relating to an exception of a portion of 1029 Talbot Street to the primary community improvement plan area. If our host could add certain attendees for this particular portion of the meeting, I'll read the motion. The motion is that report PD 242022 relating to a community improvement plan application by Canadian Commercial T2 Incorporated for 1029 Talbot Street be received for information. And further, the council authorized staff to prepare a site-specific draft amendment to the community improvement plan to consider adding a portion of 1029 Talbot Street as part of the primary community improvement plan application. And further, that council approve the requested amendment and exception to the CIP with the following three conditions. A, the applicant entering into appropriate agreements with the City of St. Thomas to secure a minimum of five units in Tower One as affordable units as defined within the community improvement plan. And that the tax increment grant program be restricted to a five-year period, notwithstanding the inclusion of affordable housing units. B, a maximum total grant of up to $2 million under the tax increment grant program for Tower One be established in recognition of the uncertainty in valuing the future assessment rate or tax revenue from this development. C, a 50% development charge grant rebate be provided for Tower One to be repaid over a 10-year period. Moved by Counsel Clark, seconded by Counsel Wookiee.
Questions or comments? But I believe we have a one of the planners for this project online tonight, Matt Campbell. And Matt, did you want to add anything at this time? I'm looking. Go ahead, Matt.
Thank you very much, Mayor President. I, I'm, we're in complete agreement with the staff report, and we'd like to thank staff for working with us so very well through this process. And we have Lee Greenwood, his, his image just popped up on the screen here. Lee's the developer on this project. We're happy to answer any questions that council may have in regards to this. We're very, very excited for this development to come to fruition. And this amendment that's before you this evening is really going to assist in bringing this development to a reality. So if there are any, any questions, happy to respond to them at this time.
Well, thank you. And I see Mr. Greenwood is on here tonight, too. Did you want to start with comments or wait for questions from us?
You know, I, I would just say that we've had a great experience working in St. Thomas so far. I think everybody on council is familiar with the first phase of our project, which has kicked off with four acres of retail. Been very successful so far, and we look forward to continuing to work on the community and finishing the corner in its entirety. So, yeah, we are here to answer questions and happy to work together.
Super. Then, questions from council? Counsel Wookiee?
Thank you very much, your worship. First of all, I want to say that I strongly support the recommendation from staff. I think it's a, a great, I think it's a great project, and I certainly appreciate what staff is saying, and I support it. And I just want to say to, while the, while the planner and the developer are on the call, that, you know, and I've said this to us before, but they haven't been in the call, is that we have an area of St. Thomas that we're going to densify, and that's great, but there's, there's very little public space. There's very little public space to walk. And for those, I'm just concerned for those residents that they have some place to be other than on a sidewalk someplace. So someplace inside that development where there would be some, some space for them to be outside. And I certainly read the report with interest regarding the difficulties of the underground parking, and I appreciate that. And I believe it's important to have as much underground parking as we can to maximize the surface amenity area. So that's just for us and for the planner and developer. Thank you.
Great. Counsel Herbert?
Thank you, worship. I noticed in the, the, the B part or the A part of the presentation that there's a minimum of five units in Tower One as affordable units. Is there a maximum somewhere? Is it, is this open for discussion? Are we going to ask for 10, 15? Or is there a maximum that we can ask? But they're, they're starting with a minimum of five as affordable units. So I'm just curious to see how high can we go with that? Or are we going to have five only as affordable units?
Mr. Pompilly?
Thank you, your worship, and through you to counsel and try to, I'll try to answer that question. We've, we've had, we've had a lot of back and forth with the developers and tried to work closely with them to consider their requests to be included within the, the primary CIP area. And in order to do that, you have to meet certain criteria. One of the criteria is you have to be adjacent to the primary, which this is. And then it has to be assessed based on the what, what was identified as the community improvement needs, and, and providing affordable housing was one of them. So in order to reach a positive solution in terms of including this development within the primary area, we negotiated on, on what, what would be an appropriate starting point for affordable units. And five is where, where we, we started at four, went up to five with, with the recent edits that were made to the report. And I think that's, that's reasonable in terms of starting this process in terms of reaching out to develop, developers, trying to form some partnerships and encourage inclusion of affordable housing in, in private development. So I think it's a great starting point from my perspective. And that, that, that it's worded in there as a minimum as just, you know, we don't want any less than that.
Just to follow up to Luke. So does that mean if we approve this tonight, and all of a sudden, six months later, they say you can only have five? Do we have any room for debate, or is there any room for that?
Through your worship, when we approve the development, when it comes forward and we enter into agreements, the agreements will ensure that there is a minimum of five. If, if the request comes in that they want to add additional ones, we'll be more than happy to accommodate additional units. But there will be, there will be a minimum of five in all, all agreements going forward for Tower One.
Counsel Clark?
Thank you, your worship. I'd just like to comment that I think it's a great start. We've been trying to encourage private developers to, to do some affordable housing, and so now we've got a template. It's a start, and it will, it will, it will be an opportunity for other developers as they look at St. Thomas to kind of know what's expected and what, what they, that we're willing to work with them. And, you know, there's partnerships to be had. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Clark. Counsel Peters?
Thanks, worship. I too am supportive. I too would echo Counselor Wookiee's comments about the green space. And, and I don't know whether there's any room on the undeveloped portion, Lot Six, that, you know, some reconfiguration could be done on the site because it is going to intensify it. It is going to be an attractive site. You know, I, I could see my late grandmother having loved this with the ability to walk for virtually everything that she would need, and with the new medical center going in across the street. This has some, some really good potential, but it, it's lacking one thing, and that is green space. The other thing I would like to see us at some point, I don't know how the discussion is initiated, but we have, we're dealing with two different property owners that have developed a substantial portion of land. And as expansion takes place in that land, so does traffic on a private road that runs off of Talbot and off of Redan Street. And I don't know how the process gets initiated or how the discussion takes place of how we deal with that, because it's going to cause a great deal of congestion in there. And I can see at some point, the, the lightning rod is going to be the city of St. Thomas. It's your fault, city. You've got to fix this. Yet, we're dealing with two private developers and a private road. Thank you.
Further questions from council? Counsel Rymel?
I just wanted to say that I certainly support it, and it's a wonderful project. And just to also enhance and say that the CIP program, like the City of St. Thomas, is very progressive. And the CIP program was actually one of the first communities that initially started the program. And, you know, by doing these various incentives that we have in the past with the seasons, the Alma College, you know, we're, we're very progressive, St. Thomas, and working with developers. And it's great to see this project, and it's great to see the developers, you know, coming on board to assist us with this housing.
Thank you. Matt or Lee, anything that you'd like to add in, in response to anything one of the members have said?
Thank you, worship. The one thing we can address in regards to the comments about green space, there is a, a city-owned park at the corner that I'm sure the city will take it upon itself to develop at some point in the future. We're unaware of any specific plans for that, that quadrant, the northeast quadrant of the intersection that was given to the city as part of the redevelopment of the Timken Lands. And then subsequent to this building, there is lots of opportunity for additional amenity space for residents. I know that Lee is including quite a bit of amenity space in the building that is proposed, and, and council is already well aware.
Yeah, and we, we have tried to go above and beyond with, you know, sidewalk widths and planting it, planting strips and things of that nature. I do think that the first apartment building proposed has a really nice sort of frontage on to the interior roadway with some green space. So it is hard to both be urban and suburban at the same time. It's a balance, and I think we will, we will achieve it and make a really nice place to live.
Okay. Counsel Baldwin Sands, I'm sorry, missed your hand before.
Thank you very much. My question is actually through to you or to the city manager on how this project is going to either enhance or help us move forward with the thresholds that we have put together for our strategic plan.
Okay. Well, I, I guess I can ask, answer a little, or, or city manager, would you like to? Okay, look, our, our strategic plan, and we've been diligently working towards the supportive housing and the total housing needs in the City of St. Thomas, as seen under the Smart Growth Proposal, that we were going to be a growing city and would need this. We've all, you know, we've all talked about the number of about 500 units a year needing to be established in order to, to reach, to house the number of new people who are choosing St. Thomas as their home. The, the project before us tonight does exactly that. It's, it's a very large chunk of, of, of housing to St. Thomas. And as has happened now in this council's time, the, and not really. It's been a long time since we built multi-use or multi-unit market rent apartments. And we've got this one happening with a proposed, perhaps second or third on this site. We know that there's two more apartments looking to be built on the Alma Coward site and a couple of other developers in town kicking the tires. And that's a, a great big part of us having to be, or being able to build those 500 housing units. Because not everybody wants a very large, single-family home lot. And myself included went that route this year. So I hope that, that, that covers where we are. If I can, is there any other questions from council? Or comments? If I could turn to Mr. Greenwood and, and just thank him, I know that he and I have spent a fair amount of time talking to each other and, and sharing ideas. And I thank Mr. Pompilly from our planning department on really making this happen and making us get there. Some other questions we have, and this council will be faced with, it is, is, is this setting a pattern going for the, forward for what we may want to do with any large apartment development? And I think this council will need to decide that under CIP, or perhaps the next council will have to take a hard look at, is this the standard? Do we need this many affordable units? Can we rebate certain things back to the builder in order to attract large market rent apartment buildings to our community? So those are discussions for this council, but I love the plan that we have tonight. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? That is carried. Good work.
Your worship, no further items on the agenda for this committee unless there are any items to be brought forward by the members. Seeing none, we'll now move into community engagement and services. First item relates to new purchase of service agreement for childcare providers entering the Canada-wide early learning childcare program. I have motion that council receive report SESS 1122 relating to the new purchase of service agreements for childcare providers entering into the Canada-wide early childhood, sorry, early learning childhood program. And further, council approve entering into new purchase of service agreements with eligible childcare providers. And further, the bylaws be prepared authorizing the mayor and clerk to execute new purchase of service agreements as approved by the Director of Social Services and having met the application criteria and process to establish mutual responsibilities, obligations, terms, and conditions related to the purchase of children's services. Moved by Counsel Baldwin Sands, seconded by Counsel Herbert.
Questions or comments from council? Counsel Baldwin Sands?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, if I may please. This program that is designed for across Canada is designed to get parents back to work, especially women entering the workforce or re-entering the workforce. Can you provide some comments on that? Again, how many spots are going to be provided and the intent?
So I can give you some general guidance around the, around the program. So the Seawalk Program or the Canada-wide Early Learning and Childcare Program in Ontario has five main priorities. The first one is to give families access to more affordable and high-quality childcare. And so the goal is to continue to decrease childcare fees for families to get down to an average of $10 a day by September of 2025. The second is to help lower childcare fees for parents and children under the age of six. So again, it's the lowering of the fees. The third is to increase childcare spaces, and the Ontario's goal is to increase childcare spaces by 86,000 spaces. And that includes 15,000 spaces that were already in process, including our 88 spaces over here. So that's counted within the, the 15,000. We haven't got the information about how to move forward with that, but the goal is to expand the system by 88,000 or 86,000 spaces over the next few years. So we're hoping that we will be able to be part of that in addition to the spot. So we already have. The other, one of the other initiatives is to support the childcare workforce. So there is funding part of this, there's funding that is part of this system to help I increase, increase the wages of early childhood educators that are working in the childcare programs, and that's happening right now. And the last is to support inclusive childcare, which is a focus on making sure that any child that has a special need finds care in a quality childcare program. So those are the five kind of large focuses of this funding and of this initiative.
Great. Go ahead, Counsel Baldwin Sands.
Thank you. You've actually answered most of my questions except for just one. By 2025, 2026, this is anticipated to save the average family about $6,000 a year with a child under the age of six.
Yeah, it depends, because it depends on the age of the child and their model of care and what their parent fee is. But it is around $6,000, which is a huge amount of money for any family.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Great. Further questions or comments from council? Seeing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
No further items under this committee unless there are any items from the members, your worship. And seeing none, we'll now move into infrastructure and civic operations. First item relates to pedestrian crossing upgrades. I have motion that report ES 6422 relating to pedestrian crossing upgrades be received for information. And further, that the tender submitted by TM3 Incorporated not be accepted, and the project re-tendered with the work to be completed in spring of 2023. Moved by Counsel Wookiee, seconded by Counsel Herbert.
Questions or comments from council? Counsel Peters?
Thanks, worship. To Justin or Dan, what is the annual cost of an individual crossing guard ballpark?
Mr. Lawrence?
Thanks. I think it's about like 12,000 to 15,000.
Okay, so if this gets, has potential savings of $65,000, why can we not look at moving forward with this? Because we're going to have payback in five years, six years. We would have payback for this of the savings we would achieve not having the crossing guards and, and moving forward. Any thoughts, comments?
Mr. Lawrence?
Thanks. Yeah, I, I think the idea is still a good one, and we should definitely go forward with it. It's just that this tendering process was a bit high. With one bidder, it was very high. So what we're suggesting is coming back, re-tendering three or four months from now, adding in a little bit more work and still doing the same thing. Hopefully, saving several hundred thousand or 100,000 anyway.
Further questions from council? Counsel Wookiee?
Thank you very much, Mr. Lawrence. I think you just alluded to something that I was thinking of, is that is to add in more crossings to make it work, the lower, to lower the unit costs. So that's what we think we might do to make this work. Thank you.
Mr. Lawrence?
That, that is the intent. Yeah, I think we have probably three more pedestrian crossings. And then we also have the, the Sunset Parkside Traffic Signal, which is another project that we could lump in together. And so the, the more you put in, the more volume, we may get some more bidders. More bidders hopefully leads to lower prices. And then, and then we can still do the same intent again.
Counsel Herbert?
Thank you, worship. A couple of questions. Were they the only company that tendered this? So anyone? Secondly, if you do re-tender in three or four months, what would happen if the price goes up? I, I'm kind of on the same page as Counsel Peters that it's going to pay back in five or six years. I mean, if it's really a necessity, it's something we probably should be saying yes to. So anyway, just, that's my question to you.
Mr. Lawrence?
Through the mayor, yeah, it's a, no one knows for sure. In this case, our judgment, our experience suggests that we think we can get a, a little bit of a lower price. So we, in this case, we think it's worth it, but I acknowledge the risk. And in this market with this inflation, it is, you know, it is a risk. Hopefully, we come in at least this price, if not a bit lower in terms of each crossing. So that's our, that's our recommendation based on understanding.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
The next item relates to emergency response dispatch room, a tender award. I have motion that council receive report PR 1622 tender award for emergency response dispatch room. And further, the council approved the award of this contract to E. Baribo Construction London Limited in the amount of $198,700 excluding HST. And further, council authorize accessing additional funds from the Infrastructure Reserve account in the amount of $28,700 excluding HST to complete this project. Moved by Counsel Kohler, seconded by Counsel Rymel.
Questions or comments? Counsel Herbert?
Thank you, worship. I was always under the impression this room already existed in the basement here. That when we had the mock exercises quite a few years ago, the core was supposed to be in the basement. Am I, am I wrong? I don't know.
Well, we've been using the training room at the police station for emergency.
I was, I was kind of talking a few years ago. I don't know if there's anybody, no? I mean, Counsel Peters and Counsel Kohler would know for sure, but anyway, that's fine.
Wasn't on any of my tours, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
Alaska, Ms. Sheridan, too. You know where the room is? No, I'm just joking.
Thank you through you, mayor. I just wanted to add that it's in the basement of 230 Talbot, so it's in our building. It's a secondary room. So if there's an emergency and the police service is unable to attend, then they would use our space.
Counsel Clark, if I could just add real quickly, Counsel Clark, we found during the, the, the start of COVID, we needed more than one emergency room because we, we weren't allowed to all be in one and be safe. And so by the use of, in that case, 304 and the police station on any given day, everybody could attend and have conversation with each other, and sometimes more than once a day during that. So that's what this room is taking the place of. Counsel Clark?
Thank you. Just wonder if we could get some, get some details on what is actually going to be done in that room? Like, what are we spending the money on?
Ms. Sheridan, I think, are you, are you our expert on this tonight? It's in your building.
I don't know if the police are on the call, or Adrian's on. Adrian, did you have information on that?
Unfortunately, Jeff left me with a few little details, but didn't get into that information too much, but we can certainly report back.
Okay. Counsel Clark, would that be okay? I mean, I, I could tell you what's in the existing emergency room, but then I'd have to kill you. No, I could tell you what is there at the police station now, and it's really simply a great deal of ability to communicate. But the, when the, when the emergency team is together, each of them are also represented by other people. And so this is to help. Go ahead. Yes, please.
Thank you. I would have some answers as well, but I can tell you that the fire chief is actually on this call and able to provide the information to you at this point, Counsel Clark, if that would work for you.
He wasn't on my screen, is he? Oh, he's in the other room. Okay.
Yeah, your worship, he's in room 304. Oh, there he is.
Excuse me, would you let the fire chief know there's an emergency? Welcome, chief.
Counsel Clark, so the answer to that is, so what we're trying to do is trying to replicate another emergency operations center. So in the event that something major happens in the city and we have a sole source of emergency operations center, that that isn't the only place we can go to. So we're duplicating as much as we can with servers, rooms, radio communications, like, kind of like a communications room for all the team players, like the mayor, the city manager, the CEMC, which is me, police chief, deputy chief, and whoever else. So we're trying to replicate that room in the case of a disaster that we don't have anywhere to go that's set up exactly like it. So that's why this is happening in this time right now, and that's why it's happening in Heather's building.
Okay. Further questions or comments? Seeing that on the report, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Nothing further for this committee unless the members have any items? Nothing further for this committee unless the members have any items. Seeing none, we'll move into corporate governance and administration. The first item relates to sanitary sewer and stormwater system rate study. For the period of twenty twenty three to twenty thirty two. I have a motion that report ES sixty two twenty two relating to the sanitary sewer and stormwater rate study be received for information. And further that the St. Thomas twenty twenty three to twenty thirty two sanitary sewer and stormwater rate study be approved in principle. Moved by Counselor Rymel, seconded by Counselor Wookiee.
It's my perpetual question, your worship. So this year was a relatively dry summer. So lots of people are watering their lawns. We laid a lot of new sod around the city with construction projects. And are there municipalities or is there a way to factor in summer water usage? To give people a break because, yes, I've heard in the past that, you know, it soaks into the ground and. Eventually ends up into the storm sewers, but not all of it ends up in the storm sewer. And I just have often wondered why we can't find a way to compensate residences who. You know, do a responsible thing of keeping a new tree planted as well, too. Is there, is there a, a vehicle to compensate for summer usage?
Mr. Lawrence?
Thanks. To Counselor Peters, I, I think we've discussed this one before, but no, there's no. I've never seen a city with a, an idea on how to rebate for a lawn watering. It, it would be, it would be a bit of a process, as you can imagine, to kind of add up all those different amounts and then subtract them from the accounts. But in, in addition, it's rates are always a zero sum game. So if we rebated, say a hundred thousand dollars for lawn watering. We'd still have to recover that a hundred thousand from the users. So essentially what you'd be doing is the person that didn't water the lawn would be subsidizing the person that did water the lawn. Or watered the car, think, you know, washed the car, things like that. So it's a, it's got pros and cons to it. And I haven't specifically heard of a, a city that's figured out a way to do that.
Counselor Clark?
Thanks. The other question that I had raised over the summer by folks, they were enjoying the splash pads in town, but they, the question was, where does the water go? As the splash pads operate all day? And is it, is there an opportunity to capture that water or is it just go into the system?
Great question. Mr. Lawrence, do you have an answer for splash pad recovery?
I think it's recycle, I think it goes around and around, but Adrian might be able to answer.
Let's, let's try Ms. Jefferson. You're, you need to unmute. There we go.
Sorry about that. Thank you, mayor. The water is not recycled. It goes back into the system. I'm not sure with for sanitary reasons if we would want to capture that water.
Counselor Clark?
So I'd be interested in seeing how much we use and whether, and what, whether there was a cost benefit analysis of, you know, to. You know, capturing that water and then use it for maybe some of the things that you're suggesting in terms of city use.
If. Mr. Lawrence, first of all, I want to thank you for some four thousand page report here. By the way, I was going to ask you to please read it to us tonight, but I know you won't. But I agree with what you said, that if I, I get that some people use water for different reasons. But we still have to collect the dollar amounts it says here to run our sanitary, sanitary sewer system. Including replacement of pipes that are growing old and replacement of, of wastewater treatment plants. If indeed we credit back to someone, this amount of money still has to be collected each year in order for us to project. How we will run our sewer system in the city and the wastewater treatment plant in the city. Am I saying that correctly?
That's generally correct. Yeah. Yes, that's correct.
Counselor Wookiee, then Counselor Clark?
Thank you very much. Mr. Lawrence, I'm looking at section five of this, and it was the development charges. The issue with development charges have not been considered within the scope of the study. It has been assumed for the purposes of this rate study, the future development will fund any necessary upsizing, et cetera, et cetera. I'm sorry for dumping this one on you, but without contacting you first, it's kind of a specific question, but generally speaking. Development charges as they relate to expansion of the system. When I read this, I was a little bit confused exactly what was meant by it. So I was hoping to get some clarity from you about how development charges are or are not used and what the rules are regarding their use in expansion of our system.
Mr. Lawrence?
Thanks. So a good example would be our sewer project on Sunset Drive. So the most northerly pump station is in pumps only the new development. So that pump station would be funded a hundred percent by DCs. The next pumping station down is in the Frisbee Golf Course, and that takes a portion from the new development and a portion from the city. So this rate study only has to get enough funds to pay for the city's existing users. And all the new portion would come from DC. So that's often projects are co-funded by both of those sources.
Counselor Clark?
I wa, I wasn't sure if I got a, an answer to whether or not it's possible to, to meter or, or get an idea of how much water was used and whether or not. It's worth, you know, capturing that water or whether it's worth diverting the water instead of just going down the sewers that it's. Goes to Pinafore Pond, you know, Pinafore Pond as a freshwater, something. And, 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 okay.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence?
I thanks. I think any reuse of, of water is a positive. So whether someone does it at home or we do it in the park or an underrean or anything. So I think it's worthwhile looking into it and, and perhaps Adrian could report back on the pros and cons of that, right? Because as you say, there's cost and benefit, but reusing water two times, for example, as irrigation, the second time is a positive thing.
Okay. Further questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie, thank you, Justin.
Next item relates to the community grants, August twenty twenty two intake. I have a motion that report TR fifteen twenty two relating to the community grants, August twenty twenty two intake be received for information. And further, the council concur with administration's review of the applications received. And further, the council approved the community grant request from the St. Thomas Minor Hockey Association in the amount of three thousand, five hundred dollars. Moved by Counselor Wookiee. Seconded by Counselor Baldwin Sands.
Questions or comments from council? Counselor Clark?
I, I'm all in favor of this. I remember we voted it down though in the past. So I just remind us that going forward, we're going to get the requests from the Panthers and maybe some other groups. For the same type of sit, situation. So I didn't have a problem with it at the time we voted it down, but it's just a reminder that we need to be consistent because we'll hear from other groups now going forward. Which I think is a good thing.
Minor Hockey reminded me, we did this for them last year in some way.
It was a one off because of COVID.
Right, okay.
Before that, we'd said no.
Further questions or comments? Counselor Herbert?
Thank you, worship. Do we know how much money we have left for this year for grants? I see it says that there's enough in, in the fund. I'm just curious how much is left.
We're going to go right to the top and ask the treasurer.
Again, off the top of my head, I'm not sure. I think there's more than twenty thousand in there.
Okay. Okay, thank you then.
Further questions or comments on the minor hockey grant? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie.
The next item relates to the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three employee group benefits manager. I have a motion that report HR oh seven twenty twenty two relating to the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three employee group benefits renewal be received for information. And further, the council approved the renewal for the employee group benefits program with manual life financial. For extended healthcare, dental, short term disability, life insurance, and long term disability benefits effective October the first, twenty twenty two. For one year, that period of one year. And further, the council directs that a portion of the unrestricted deposit account. UDA be used to fully fund, fund the claims fluctuation reserve to the recommended one point, or sorry, fifteen percent on the balance to be refunded to the city. And deposited into the HR issues reserve. Moved by Counselor Rymel, seconded by Counselor Wookiee.
Questions or comments from council? Counselor, Counselor Herbert?
Thank you, worship. In the conclusion, it says it's an overall increase of twelve point one percent. Is that an acceptable rate increase or is it something we have no control over?
Well, I, I would see Ms. Schultz here today to help you with your question, Counselor Herbert.
Good evening, Mayor Preston, members of council. That actually is an excellent question. It is a little bit high because we, we did a marketing last year and we took a reduction. In the premiums last year, so we're making up the difference this year.
So you're good with it?
We're good with it. It's just an increase virtually two years built into one.
Okay, thank you then. Further questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Your worship, no further items for this committee unless there are.
I have Counselor Baldwin's hands.
Thank you very much. My question is through to the director of services, Mr. Lawrence. And that is, I'm going to ask for a staff report with civic operations on the community recycling center. I have heard that there is an increase in the number of bicycles that are not being turned over to organizations that are rehabilitation bicycles. As well as an increase of furniture that is not being able to be picked up as well. So is there an opportunity here? By expanding some of the groups that do pick up items such as furniture, appliances, bicycles, et cetera. For example, for use for recently arrived Ukrainian refugees, et cetera, or to faith based groups that are helping people get up on their feet. I know that they have used Habitat for Humanity in the past, but I have heard that Habitat for Humanity, that their warehouses are now full. So if that is indeed the case, is there an opportunity for other groups to be able to use some of the discarded items from the community recycling center?
Mr. Lawrence, do you want to help us with that reporter? Give a short answer now and come back?
I, I think that one deserves a bit of, bit of time and analysis. So a report back would be, I think, a good idea.
Good. We look forward to that. Any other items, counselor? No? Any other counselor? Counselor Herbert?
Thank you, worship. I've had the opportunity to speak to some of the downtown merchants and, and the question they're asking me is. When we had the deputation last week, there was a working committee supposed to be put together. They're asking what the timeframe would that, would you actually think that would begin? And, and my only comment was if it's a new council in two or three weeks, or is it something that we're going to put together and form it with the, the business owners? So looking for a timeframe when they think it'll start.
I, I think I'll be very careful on this because there's some of the people involved that have yet to be spoken to on the terms of reference. That this council and, and the person giving the deputation has asked for. Some of those meetings are ongoing in the, in this week even. So Counselor Herbert, if I could ask you to ask that question at the next council meeting, I think we'd be able to more clearly answer the questions as to what steps we're taking. This isn't only a council commission or committee that we're looking at, and we're looking at discussions right now with the, some of our. Associations, community groups and individuals on what the makeup should look like and what the terms of reference should be.
Thank you. So I'll ask it at the next meeting. So thank you.
Yes, but I will share with you lots of work happening since last Monday and more to come. Any other items for this committee? Seeing none?
Council will now reconvene into regular session. I have a motion that the recommendations, directions and actions of council and committee, the whole. As recorded in the minutes of this date be confirmed, ratified and adopted. Moved by Counselor Clark, seconded by Counselor Kohler.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
No reports of committees this evening, your worship. We now move into petitions and communications. First item relates to a proclamation and flag raising request. From Family and Children Services of St. Thomas and Algen. I have a motion that council of the city of St. Thomas proclaim October sixteenth to twenty second, twenty twenty two. As Foster Family Week in the city of St. Thomas. And further that the Family and Children Services flag be flown at City Hall from October seventeenth to twenty second, twenty twenty two. Moved by Counselor Burgess, sorry, seconded by Counselor Kohler.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's Carrie.
The second item on the agenda is a letter of thanks received from Ethel De La Penateer, thanking council for its recent proclamation. Of September ninth, twenty twenty two as fetal alcohol spectrum disorder awareness day. Your worship, unless there are any further items under petitions from the members.
Counselor Baldwin Sands.
Thank you. Earlier today, we received a notice from the Office of the CAO regarding Orange Shirt Day. And since it's the last day we meet as a council before Friday, September the thirtieth, I was wondering if you would like to update the public on what is actually happening on that day and the times, et cetera.
Yes, we have a, both a meeting at the front, at the front of counts of, front of City Hall and a flag raising starting at noon on September thirtieth. We ask you all to wear your orange shirts and please, public, it's not just council, it's, we would love to have everyone out who can come. Counselor Baldwin Sands?
Would you like to talk about some of the other things that are going on at the library and with the public art as well?
I'll let you help us with that.
I understand the library is also doing a tie, an orange ribbon as a ceremony as part of that, the events that are going on that day. And the public art all through the city of St. Thomas will be, where available, lit orange.
Yes.
Respectfully that day as well.
Okay. And I'm sure by the time we get to that day, even more, but thank you for sharing that. Last year, the tie a ribbon program. And you could still see the evidence of it at the library today. Excellent. Counselor Kohler?
Thanks, your worship. Under Communications, I'd just like to welcome Mark Goulding, counselor, Mark Goulding from the municipality of North Rustic that is in the gallery right now visiting. She's a former resident of St. Thomas and certainly proud to have her back visiting.
Oh, we'd have her back in a second. The amount of work that Mark did in this community on things like Iron Horse Festival and other things. It's great to see you in our community and, and the community you're currently in is. Special to have you. Thank you. Further communications? If I could add, add one more, I don't know, I'm somewhere near unfinished business or new business, but this week is Smile Cookie Week. At, at Tim Hortons and we, we'd like to suggest how much they do with the funds raised for Smile Cookies. So. Crack open your wallet at work tomorrow or wherever you are and, and take some Smile Cookies into work. They really do bring a smile to not only the people receiving the cookies, but. The work, great work that Tim Hortons does with the money in our community after the sale of the cookies. So I want to make sure that we got that in during the week of Smile Cookies. Counselor Wookiee?
Just thank you very much, your worship. But Harvest Fest is this, this, starting this Friday at Pinafore Park, and they've got a lot of, a lot of fun things planned. You know, the idea of a silent disco just is a lot of fun, although I will not be doing my Elaine dance for that one, but looking forward to the event this weekend. Thank you.
Well, I always thought silent disco was better than the regular kind, so I should be punished for saying that. But thank you, Counselor Wookiee, for reminding us that that another large event in Pinafore Park is occurring this Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Thank you. The Rail City Races, now that you've reminded me of this weekend, Sunday is the Rail City Race is also occurring through our community and the Torch Run Relay is on Saturday. So, or on Friday, on Friday. So that's another event for this weekend. Counselor Peters, did I?
Well, I was going to raise it, your worship, on your new business, but now that we're doing public, public service announcements right at this point, it's probably appropriate time. I just wanted to remind everyone that the Municipal Access and Awareness Committee is hosting its accessibility open house this week, this Thursday, September twenty. this week, this Thursday, September twenty-second, from one until three PM at the Senior Center. This is a great opportunity to come out and find out services, whether it's publicly funded nonprofits or for-profits of a number of services that are available, and hopefully we can make a bit of a push pushing that out on our city website and Facebook page as well, too. And I, something that I was really glad to see this year is that the St. Thomas Committee has partnered with the Committee of the County of Elgin, as well as Central Elgin. So in the past, it had been just St. Thomas focused. This is now going to be a county-wide focus, and I think that that's a, a good sign going forward. One to three, September twenty-second, Senior Center. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Counsel Peters. Any other communications, unfinished business, new business? I've combined all the categories. All right, this is it, speaker, you don't get it. All right, thank you.
Your worship, if there's no further items of petitions, unfinished business, or new business, we'll now move into bylaws. I have a motion that leave be granted to bring in two new bylaws. Moved by Counsel Rymel, seconded by Counsel Herbert.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
I have motion that the bylaws be now read a first time, referred to council and committee, the whole, and read a second time. Moved by Counsel Rymel, seconded by Counsel Herbert.
Questions or comments? Seeing done, all in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
First bylaw, please.
First bylaws, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting held on the nineteenth day of September, twenty twenty-two.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Post carried, second bylaw, please.
The second of three bylaws is a bylaw to appoint a fire chief for the city of St. Thomas, being Mr. David Gregory.
Discussion? All those in favor? Post carried unanimously. Third bylaw for third reading, please.
A third bylaws, a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of corporation to a certain agreement between the city and Enbridge Gas Incorporated. This relates to a twenty-year franchise agreement.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, all is in favor? Post carried. Your worship, I rise to report successful passing of three bylaws.
Great.
I have motion by Counsel Rymel, seconded by Counsel Herbert, that the reported council and committee, the whole, on the three bylaws be received and adopted. The same be read a third time in gross, signed by the mayor, sealed and numbered.
Questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
Your worship, we have some public notices this evening. The first notice relates to council intending to consider an amendment to the Council procedural bylaw one ten dash eighty-two at its next meeting on October the third, twenty twenty-two, to change the date of its inaugural meeting to the third Monday in November. Next, notices hereby provided that a public meeting will be held on October the eleventh at six PM regarding both proposed twenty twenty-three sewage service rates, rate fees and charges, and water consumption rate, water supply fees and charges. And then also that administration intends to introduce a report and bylaw at the October seventeenth council meeting relating to the proposed twenty twenty-three sewage service rate fees and charges bylaw and the twenty twenty-three water consumption rate, water supply fees and charges. Your worship, no notices of motion. At this time, there is a need to move into closed session. I have motion that this meeting be closed to deal with a proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land to labor relations matters and a personal matter about an identifiable individual. Moved by Counsel Burgess, seconded by Counsel Baldwin Sands.
Before I take the vote, I will point out the same as we usually do. This council has now finished its business in open, for those of you watching at home. And we will be moving into closed session. When we finish the business in closed session, we will come out of closed session, back into open, simply to adjourn the business that we have done. So, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie? I didn't even ask for discussion, is there?